Go through a formal.
Yeah.
We, um.
Passes and.
An approval of the minutes, motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on January ninth, two thousand, excuse me, twenty twenty four. Now a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on January ninth, twenty twenty four. Get a motion.
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on January twenty second, twenty twenty four. Have a motion.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That leads us now to our treasurer's report. Charles?
Yes. Good evening. Sorry that I can't be with you in person, but I'm there in spirit. Uh, my report is relatively brief as this time of year is pretty quiet from a financial standpoint. On the receipt side, we took in collections of about four hundred thousand dollars across all of our major departments, the building department, sewers, justice department, and the docks. And importantly, in December, we issued our seasonal renewals. So we'll see some nice cash flow as we enter the early part of twenty twenty four related to that. On the disbursement side, we spent about one point five million dollars as usual payroll and employee benefits were the largest portion of that. We also had our annual insurance renewal. Uh, this is the village's general insurance liability auto. There's a couple specialty insurances for the police and the fire and ambulance corps. That's five hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's pretty significant. And those costs, you know, I think we've seen that in our personal lives. Those costs are going up pretty steeply, the renewals, and we're, that's impacted us as well. Aside from that, really, uh, the only other thing of note is we did fund the annual ambulance corps service award program. That's fifty thousand dollars, and we had a fifty thousand dollar bill for some sidewalk repair. But that was really it. You know, I, I fully expect as we get into, uh, the next couple of months, things to pick up both in terms of activity and on the financial side.
I have a question. Yeah, I have a question, Charles. As far as the insurance goes, is there anything that we can do or that those organizations can do to cut those costs?
You know, I, I, I don't know that we've, uh, we use a broker brokerage firm. I don't know to what extent they actually put it out to bid or get competitive bids. But what we could start to do is maybe talk to some of our comparable, um, villages and towns around us to see what they're paying, who they use, and see how we stand against some of our peers, and then take it from there.
Okay, I would agree that we should do that.
Okay, will do.
Anybody else have any questions for the treasurer?
No.
Thanks, Charles.
Have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us to our department committee reports. And I will start with the police department, fire department, and ambulance corps. Uh, before I start with the police department report, I would just like to publicly recognize that Officer Scott Frankenbach has been named the twenty twenty three Officer of the Year by the Kiwanis Club of Southampton. So I would like to congratulate our police force and congratulate Scott Frankenbach, Officer Frankenbach, for being honored. So congratulations. So the, in the month of January twenty twenty four, the Sag Harbor Police Department had six hundred and nine calls for service. We had five aggravated unlicensed operation. We had four petty larceny. We had two grand larceny. So I guess the thieves are out. We had, uh, one suspended registration, two harassment calls. Interesting. And we had six, six motor vehicle accidents. That, that, well, that year to date, of course, six arrests because January is the first month. And we had forty eight uniform traffic tickets that were issued. So that report was given to me by, uh, Lieutenant Drake. Thank you, Lieutenant. That brings us to the Sag Harbor Fire Department. In the month of January twenty twenty four, the fire department volunteered for twelve hundred and sixty six man hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to forty two calls for service. These calls included one mutual aid to a structure fire. We had one structure fire where a person was severely burned and had to be airlifted to Stony Brook. We had five calls for smell of smoke in the residence, and we had numerous false alarms. With the start of the new year, we continued our training with the majority of the members taking their PES, Bloodborne, and Hazmat yearly refresher courses. Uh, we also had instructors, uh, come to the East Hampton Training Center to teach an advanced forcible entry class, which, uh, teaches new techniques on how to gain entry if a front door of a house or a house is locked in case of an emergency. So that report is by our First Assistant Chief, Michael Guyer. Which then brings me to the ambulance corps. In the month of January twenty twenty four, we had fifty one emergency calls. We had four work nights. We had three meetings, eleven training session for a total man hours of one thousand and forty four for the month of January. So that concludes my report for our police, fire, and ambulance. I will now turn to Deputy Mayor Hay for the parks and open spaces, justice court, and the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with the justice court. Uh, January, we had one case open for penal law. Um, forty eight for vehicle traffic law, two for civil violations, total of fifty one cases. We also had eleven cases closed. Um, given the revenue stream that came in and the number of cases, it's comparable to prior years. Most of the heavy volume for Sag Harbor comes in in the summer months, the seasonal months anyway. Um, I'm going to be brief and leave it at that. Um, I also want to then turn it over to, uh, John Shaka for a report out on, on the latest from the Parks and Open Space Committee. Um, and after he finishes the presentation, I'll make a couple of closing marks on, on work that's in progress. If you're ready, Mr. Shaka, I'll turn it over to you.
One second, I'll be right there.
Take your time.
Get the documents. Technical difficulty.
Then I, then I will, then I'll go ahead. Um, so, um, in addition, one of the things that the Parks and Open Space Committee has been working on is our request for proposals for both traffic and environmental consultants to help, um, do an assessment of both some of the conceptual proposals that have been made around traffic and around, um, the work, um, that we hope to accomplish in open spaces over the next year. Um, for an environmental consultant, um, the mayor has asked that we schedule a workshop session to go through those RFPs to make sure that we're all on the same page with what we're asking for, what we're looking at, um, how we're asking, um, before we issue those RFPs. So sometime, um, in the, in the relatively near future, we'll look to schedule, um, a workshop to review and discuss those RFPs, get input and feedback on them.
Just on that note, uh, Deputy Mayor Hay, so this is going to be something that I think we should consider moving forward. Is picking a, a day in the month, a Thursday, say, where we get together to discuss such items in a work session that's open to the public. We can get their public input. Uh, most municipalities do such a thing.
And so, um, just for everybody's, um, understanding us as we go through this, um, Mr. Shaka is going to take us through a, another proposal that, um, has been developed by the Parks and Open Space Committee. Um, and that will, the concept is that would be included in the potential work, um, that we request assessments from traffic and or environmental consultants in the RFPs. Um, so this is, I think, the third or fourth presentation, um, the Parks and Open Space Committee has made. Um, all of those presentations, um, are, would be subject of the RFP that will be discussed, um, at a workshop later.
There you go. Mr. Mayor, trustees, thank you for having me. I'm John Shaka, um, member of POSAC and, uh, Chair of the Planning Board, and not very technically proficient, apparently. I apologize for that. So I don't have images up on the screens. We weren't able to figure that out. Um, I do have this, which I may refer to. But let me talk you through, um, what was this? I think most of you know what we're here to talk about already anyway. Um, you know, when we're talking about open spaces, uh, we're talking about what is out there in those, in those, what, we're looking at those spots that are open spaces. What can we do better? Are they being utilized properly? Could it be utilized in a better way? Um, you're also looking at how do you move between them or how do you get to them? Not so disallowed from planning overall, where that cap, what, what, uh, what do we see out there which is being done or not being done? How can we do it better? So tonight I'm going to talk to you about two different things, but what, what I think we can do, we at POSAC think we can do better. One is a bicycle connection between Hayden Beach and, um, let's say, Long Warp and Steinbeck Park. Um, presently, you know that in the code, there is, uh, a section on bike routes in the village. I think there are six of them listed in code. They were adopted in two thousand nine, I think. It was an attempt to, uh, facilitate alternative forms of transportation into, in and through the village and giving people a chance to understand how can we do this safely? How do I get from here to there? Um, in a safe way and not go on Main Street in places where you're not supposed to be. So.
Looks like you got something on the screen.
Woo hoo. Pass. Good job.
That's a start. Okay. We'll get to that. It's part two. Um, thank you for that. Um, I'm glad someone's technically proficient.
Thank you, Cassie.
Yes, very much, very much. Um, so, uh, not included in that, in, in those streets is, is, is something that we think is, is, should be included. And that's a connector between Hayden Beach essentially and, and Long Warp and Steinbeck Park. And if you think about the, if you can think of it, which I don't have, I have this map, but if you think about the, um, the state bike lanes that exist on Route one fourteen, they come from East Hampton and they, they terminate at, um, at Hempstead Street, I think is where it terminates. Um, and then pick, then the state route sign, it's a state route, goes right on Hempstead, then right again on Bay Street, and it brings bikers down along Bay Street and, and rejoins at the bridge, rejoins the, the state bike path. I'm using those words carefully because bike path is different from bike routes. Um, so we're proposing that the village simply add a, change the code slightly and make that section a bike, a village bike route as well as a state bike route. And the rationale behind that is when it is a village route, the village can decide to do proper signage, um, wherever the bike routes are.
Can I ask you to just distinguish for us all the difference between the path and the route?
Yeah, the bike path is a dedicated space. So if you think of the bike path on Route one fourteen, say, um, it's, I think parts that are green, um, they might not be green, but it's a, on one fourteen in North Haven. It's on the side of the road. There's, uh, bikes can go, are only there. Uh, maybe runners and walkers are there, but cars never go into that space. Um, and they might.
Sure. You sure about that?
Not designed for violation.
They're not supposed to.
But the idea is that you have a space and, and hopefully it's buffered a little bit by a couple lines maybe, or maybe if you're lucky, there's something physical there. Keep, keep bikes and cars there. A bike route. Um, we have bike routes in, in the village now, and you probably are aware of those. Uh, there are signs, there are stencils, they're on, on the ground now. They're white and they show a bike car and they have these arrows. We call them charas. Um, uh, charas are a sign to let people know that this is a bike route and this route can take you to different places through the village. It's not a dedicated space only. You're sharing the space, the bikes, and the automobiles or trucks.
I think that's what I was referring to more than a specific path.
Right.
Because that, that's part of the roadway, even though it has the bike symbols on it.
That's right. That's right.
It's not always respected.
It's not always respected. Um, but there ways to improve that. Um, we have, you know, um, the yearly, I, I think I bought the, that stencil back in two thousand and nine or two thousand and ten. A lot of those states like Harper gave it to D R that he, um, put up with me when I was putting it on my driveway and putting chalk down to show him what it would look like. Um, and he, you know, to his credit, he put down several in, in the village. I think they're still there. Oftentimes, they're not, they're, well, we'll get, we'll cross that bridge at a later date. Um, but one can improve that signage so that it's more effective to your point, Mr. Mayor. Um, but we can, we, I'd like, I'd like to include Bay Street and Hempstead Street as part of that, um, so that when the time comes, we do decide to, to improve that infrastructure, we have the ability to do it.
Does it, have you taken a close look at that to see if we could actually carve out a path for bikes somehow?
Well, that's, that would be one of the purposes of a traffic consultant, to have them assess those types.
Because that, that's what seemed to me to be a safer.
I would love that.
Something that would be used more.
I would love that. And to, to your point, um, you, oftentimes, what you see in, in more urban environments or more, more congested environments or, uh, busy environments, you have bike lanes where you can, and then you move into a bike charrow situation where that's, that's not possible. It's narrow, where there's too many parked cars or things like that. Um, so Bay Street sort of seems an obvious place.
Right.
Certain parts that's, or bike, uh, bike lane. Um, other places, not so much. Um, and for example, I think the reason that the state routed the bike route to, and along Hempstead, running along straight through month fourteen, uh, right through the village, which you have the school there, you have the funeral parlor there. You have a lot of businesses and you can't, you know, you can't, you can't compete with all that. So, um, I guess why it goes that way. So I love looking at that and, um.
Sure.
But that's, that's the point. That's, that's the one ask we're having.
I mean, I usually from, I'm on Hempstead Street, so when I go into town, I'll, I'll take the sidewalk. I'll ride on the sidewalk. So.
Right.
Because I'm away from traffic. I'm not, but that's not really always safe for people that are walking or somebody, a car can back out. They can't really see you.
Okay, your point's a good one. If, if, if you have any kind of good infrastructure, it makes it, makes the public more aware that they, that they, they belong there. Drivers understand that, that bikers belong there and everyone feels safe as a result. Usually traffic slows down when they think their bikes are around or that you see bikes around. Um, so it's a win-win, uh, ultimately for, for everybody. Um, so we're asking that you can, that, uh, that you amend the code, uh, or consider amending the code to, to, to make that section that I'm talking about. I'll show it to you. Uh, if I had to, if I had that there, uh, make that part of the bike route of the village of Sag Harbor. There's also another section, two sixty five dash seven, use of sidewalks. The talks about, um, well, it's, it's in conflict uh, with, with our bike. We, Long Island Avenue is part one of our bike routes, but, uh, in, in the southern part of the code, there's a chunk that says, there's a section of that, that no bikes allowed. So I was sitting and talking with Lieutenant Drake, and he, I think he and I agree, uh, we all agree that these, that can be amended. And it's a good idea to amend that to allow bikes on there, and so you wouldn't have it in conflict. Um, and he also supports the, the bike route along Bay Street. Um, so we've spoken, uh, to multiple people to try to make sure this is okay.
Have you spoken to council about this, about amending the code and does any difficulties with that?
No, we haven't, yeah.
No, these are recommendations from POSAC, and it's, we still have to figure out whether or not we'd even try to implement any code revisions until after or before the traffic consultants do their work.
Good point.
Because it's the same areas that they'll be looking at. They'll be looking at Bay Street, Long Island Avenue.
Right. And, and it might, yeah, that's exactly right. So, um, that'd be helpful. Um, if you, if you don't mind, and we were to part two, which is, um, something I'm excited about, uh, which is kind of, you know, the, the connecting people that are at Mash Park to people on the other side of the village, say, um, high school students or school students, um, and trying to make it easier to get between those two. This has been a problem for as long as I've been around here for a quarter century. And, um, and we all know that one intersection at Jermaine and Madison is problematic. We've talked about improving sidewalks. I think everyone's in support of that. No one's saying, don't do that. But we have an idea at POSAC that maybe we can do something in addition to that, that's, um, thinking outside the box a little bit, and, um, and might give us something really interesting as a result, an increased usage, particularly among students and, and, uh, people that live over there. And what I'm talking about specifically is, um, uh, two eighty six Madison Street is a plot. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you saw me down in Villachal looking at that, trying to figure that out. I didn't know that someone had already done this before me. I think then he, and here tonight, I think he was, then he'll be talking to you later on. Uh, he's way ahead of me, and I'm happy to say that. Um, but it was his idea as well. Um, we happen to find each other and, um, and we think this is a good idea.
The school seemed to be amiable to that too, if you remember.
The superintendent has approached me twice and saying, saying, hey, where are we with this plan? I said, well, slow down. I haven't got my ACW yet. I'm working on it. They, they, he is very excited about it.
I also reached out to Southampton Town and spoke to them about the plan. They didn't seem to have any objections to it. So.
Fantastic. Um, two eighty six Madison, we've, we've done a bit of historical research, uh, and thank you to the trustees here to help out them. Uh, two eighty six Madison was acquired by the town of Southampton in two thousand and twelve, I think. Um, it has some restrictions on it. I'm not sure what they all are, but we need to do some more work on that. There are steering restrictions. It is, is, uh, is partially wetland. Um, so, uh, uh, and what you're seeing at the top there is, it's a little hard to see it, I suppose, but, um, that, that marking, that green is, is, is right, if you come down Grand Street from, say, the backside of, of the high school.
Right.
Um, you come to Madison, right opposite you is two eighty six. Um, is two eighty, what, what is, it's a, it's a one block and it goes all the way through to Suffolk Street.
Roughly where Madison, where Grand T is into Madison.
That's right. That's right. And, um, it's dry often in the summertime. It's, it's a bernal. It's, I think it's a bernal wetland. Um, uh, there you go. Thank you. Um.
So you, they would have to cross Suffolk Street.
There, yeah, so, so if you, if this is okay, um, there's the high school. Coming down here, you get to, that's Grand behind the square thing. That's the plot we're talking about. And right there is the cemetery. So, uh, if they were to come through, people were to go through and bike pass through that plot, they'd end up at the top corner of.
Where the jog in the road is.
Yeah.
Where the jog in the road.
And there's a paved road into the cemetery right there.
There's a paved road in the cemetery right there.
So in essence, it would be the back of this, the back.
Yeah.
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 Pack engines.
And that'll get you all the way to the park or?
No.
No?
Okay, no, it won't. Um, you have to pop out onto Jermaine at some point. I was thinking initially that we would move people right onto Suffolk Street and then left onto Jermaine. I've walked this, this area with, uh, Ed Hollander, um, and I, I, I have my, I gave him my idea of making the south side of, of Jermaine, uh, maybe a water sidewalk, maybe, um, bike lanes. And he, he likes the idea, but he didn't think we have the space there for it, at least on that part of Jermaine.
Because of trees.
We need to have, we need to have some, we need to have, uh, some, some.
Traffic consultants.
Traffic consultants. That's why we need traffic consultants looking at that. As you go further west on Jermaine, you probably know that Jermaine becomes a bit broader, um, and, and, and there are fewer big trees. As you go that way, the, it's somewhat narrower and there are bigger trees and things like that. So anything we can do to get, move people this side and closer to the park is a win. And then if we, if we, we could pop out at, at Suffolk, or we could go through, uh, the, the cemetery and, and then go left on Jermaine. And by doing, going through, perhaps, we would avoid, uh, some of those restrictions. How about today? It's, it's all, it's, it's all worth looking at and talking about and exploring further. Um, but the, uh, the linchpin in my mind is that property. And, um, if we can go to the other photo, if you, there you go.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I'm want, I'm want to call up, uh, Lieutenant Drake, because he, he called me up and said, hey, do you, were you aware of what's, what has been going on, what was built over at, um, it's just called Wolf Swamp Preserve in North Sea, um, just off of North Sea Road. This is there. This was built this past year on, uh, the na, by the nature conservancy on their property. Uh, it's a, um, the nature conservancy going over, going through, uh, a wetland. And it is what they call a universal access trail. It is for people walking, wheelchairs, um, bicycles. Uh, and they get, they get access to a wetland area and they get to be with nature and enjoy it and see it and learn, learn about it. And as you can see, it has one of those, um, grid tops that was a requirement of, um, Martin Che in Southampton Town, when he was, uh, looking at the designs and, and working with them on how to improve it and make it environmentally friendly. So they did a really wonderful environmentally friendly, sort of, let me call it a, a, a bridge, for lack of a better word, um, installed with heli, I think I'm getting the word wrong, but it's, uh, they're helical piles, I think, so that you don't disturb the wetland as much as possible. Um, and, um, it's a, it's a great success. And as soon as I saw it, I thought, that's exactly what I had in my mind. And I think that's what Finney had in his mind as well. Um, so we're using that as an example of what can be done. And if we were to put that through there on that piece of property with the blessing of Southampton Town, we would not only, uh, have a, a new route, keep, get kids and, and all people away from that funky intersection. Um, but you'd also have new access to, uh, wetland right in our midst. Um, and part of the reason I think the school is interested in this is that, uh, increases the educational opportunities and it's for, 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 uh, students in the school and the educators. So it's again, I think, a win-win-win for lots of people. Um, we, I, I have spoken or reached out and had communications with Tommy Tronfodini. And Finney had was, was communicating with him in, in advance of me, so he knows about it. Um, I'd like us to move forward with it. I'd like to support on that. We have proposed, I think it's a great idea. Um, and I, I really don't, I don't know who would be opposed to it, but, um, I'm happy to hear your comments or concerns.
And the educational part in the cemetery too.
Yes.
Learning.
History.
Learning the history.
Trustee Kate reached out to, uh, to people at the, at the cemetery.
Right. So it's a pretty neat opportunity, you know, all around. You can be environmental education as well as historical education.
But we're still awaiting, um, we're going to reach out formally to the cemetery and ask their approval, um, to have access to, and, and public access already is there, so, but for this purpose in particular.
Nice. So Johnny, is there, if, if you went right across from the lot you're talking about at the south end of the cemetery, does that come out into the park?
No.
No.
It does not. Um, you come in, there, there's an, there's an, uh, entrance to the cemetery right from that, at that bend. Um, and it's paved. So one could go right off, off of that plot, right into the cemetery. At some point, you have to turn right and head down toward Jermaine.
But it's a much more, a shorter route onto Jermaine then. You, and you cut out the really nasty.
Yes.
Exactly right.
And it's, it's educational and it's nat- natural. I think it's great.
Yeah, I imagine.
I love these little wormholes. It's sort of like a little high line, you know, sort of working its way through the village to get from maybe.
The magic that's stored down by the, the broken, the broken mask, you know, for example.
Absolutely.
Right.
There's all sorts of, there's all sorts of possibilities here. Um.
There was that other place we met where we chatted about this earlier in the week. Um, different location in the village off Rose Street. If you walk west on Rose Street, directly across the street by the vet is a paper road that takes you through, you could go through the woods, and you could almost create this shortcut from the western side of the village all the way into Main Street without having to go all the way. You're sort of one side of a triangle instead of two. Uh, but I love these ideas. I think this is fantastic, and thanks so much for.
And then the public spaces that exist already.
Yes, and it's just opening them up and allowing people.
They, we're kind of overlooked.
Yeah.
And we're trying to, you know,结合 together with, with our needs and the community's needs.
And, and again, assuming that, you know, traffic consultants, environmental consultants are all on board, have ideas that how to even do better, uh, access points and access venues for us and, and to give us recommendations. Um, one of the interesting things, I think, that Drew Harvey, another POSAC member sent to us, was Shelter Island has an actual map of all the open spaces. of all the open spaces, access, water access points, and how to get in and out of them as well, that ultimately we should have as well. It's just, it's a great idea.
Good goal.
Yeah. So it's one of the goals we're working towards. Okay?
Good, thank you for your time, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
And is Finney talking now? Is Finney going to talk now? No?
Yes, actually above you.
Up above you, that's.
You're fine.
Uh, hello, my name is Finney. Uh, thank you for having me.
Finney, I'm sorry, but we ask you to state your full name and residence.
Oh, you're welcome, okay. My name is Finney, I'm in Arvidale, and I live on 26th Grand Street. Okay, so this lot, I live in between the lot and the school. The people who I've brought the idea, you know, I've, I've talked to them about this idea. Everybody who I've, I've talked to like the idea, so there's definitely a lot of community support. Uh, I know the kids at the school could use it. I've seen them use the intersection at Jermaine, it, it, I've almost gotten hit multiple times there. So this would be a really great alternative route that they could take. And one of my neighbors, she, her husband died. And he is buried at St. Michael's. So instead of going through the intersection, she could take this path, just safer. And it's really nice, it's much nicer because you have all that, all that nature. I can't think of anything else, uh, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would think of other safety concerns, like lighting, you know, because they got, with the sun going down or. So I think that's things that we should consider. I don't know how remote of an area it is, I haven't been down there. But are there houses that are visible, or is it?
Oh, yeah.
There's one, there's one house on, on the north side.
Right.
Say, and it goes through, it goes all the way through, that property goes all the way through from street to street. And, but it's, but there was quite a bit of space there.
Okay.
So that was a problem, you know, we, we, that could be benefited, sort of, it gave them more privacy.
The area that would frankly be the darkest would be the cemetery itself. And so that's, but as, as we, and I'm not sure we'd want to, or what we could do there, but we can, again, ask the traffic consultants to take a look.
Yep.
Is that it with your report, Stephanie?
That is it.
All right, so that brings us to trustee Corish with the Sewer Department, Village Grants and the ZBA.
Nothing as exciting as that, but we'll get down to some business of the sewer treatment plant. The report for January, total gallons, 1.666 million gallons, ominous number. Total gallons of sludge removed is 24,000. DMR reports are forwarded to four. Suffolk County DHS inspection, the next inspection will be the first of April. And New York State DC inspection is always is open. Then the summary of, we had no complaints for the, for the month of January, summary of operations. Waste water treatment plant is running well under all permitted levels and now operating just two of the five basins. Tanks. Suffolk County Department of Health Services inspection was conducted January 8th, and we had a satisfactory rating, that's the highest rating you can get, there's nothing higher than satisfactory. Replacement of a decanter, the decant actuator, actuator on basin number three was performed in-house, which was great, because that saves us quite a lot of money, as opposed to getting outside contractor in, it's a big job. And then within the village and the collection system, sewer main rotor jet maintenance and camera inspection was conducted. This is something we do every year on a rotating basis to get a good idea of what's going on underground inside our collection system. And we'll have some spot repairs to follow up, we identified a number of locations that need a little work. Grease traps throughout the village were inspected, and I think we have a total of about 27, five failed. We hate to see any failures, so that's a great improvement since we changed code. So we hope that the, that the five, the five locations that failed will take remedial action. And then on 118, we hauled out 24,000 gallons of sludge by Quackenbush. And from December through January, the decrease was 141,000 gallons showing. Obviously after Christmas, things slowed down here in January. And just a number we put together last year, throughout the 12 months, we treated 20, just over 26 million gallons of outflow that was treated in the plant. And that went down into, it, it is a magnificent sort of asset for the village and, and underpins our prosperity and clean water. So we're delighted to have it, and we look forward to increasing its utility to us as we work our way through these service area expansions. Onto grants, we had some discussions, the fire department has a grant available through New York State for equipment. And for infrastructure, we had one meeting to discuss that with fire chief, the mayor and Jen Messiano. We are meeting again, I think, this, this week on Thursday. We're trying to identify areas and identify equipment that would be suitable and, and appropriate for grant application, working on that. We're also submitting another grant to East Hampton CPF, that's due on Thursday. Looking for more funding for Area L, which is not fully funded yet. So that's, that's underway, and that, Mayor concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Corish, that brings us to trustee Plum with Public Works, Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review.
Thank you, Mayor. The highway department is preparing all trucks for snow plowing and salt brine operations just in time. They wore out today, and everything seems to be okay. Suffolk County Water has completed installing the 12-inch water main, Williams and Henry. The new LED light project has been completed, except for some of the Cobra heads around town. And they're working on the software to dim the lamps, they can be done individually. That is literally individually. It's a little complicated, but they're working on it, they've had some classes in how to work the software, so they're getting there. $55,000 has been spent replacing sidewalks around the village. And as Dee points out, zero dollars left. 4,000 feet of sewer mains have been rotor jetted and cambered, that's what Ian just mentioned. And the highway is now cleaning all the small catch basins in the village with its sweeper and its super, super sucker combination. Big vacuum. They have a, the tree, the tree, Sag River Tree Fund has requested a budget line item of $20,000 to cover the cost of pruning trees, enabling safety, vehicle structures, ongoing health of trees, et cetera, et cetera. They have, in 2003, they, they, three commemorative trees were planted. Four plaques were in, installed, including one replaced. And around 20 trees watered and mulched regularly, May through October. And that's, and Dee, and they thank Dee and the Public Works Department for their advice and help. And before anybody asks about the plot, I've been working on this and we lost track of time, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. That brings us to trustee Kane.
Not sure how I follow that up. Let me start with the building department. For January, actually, it was very profitable on the receipts. We had 134,668, which relative to January of 2023, where we had 43,000, so more than three times. We just know things come lumpy. Sometimes it takes longer for projects to get done. And just for everyone to recall, when someone comes in to get a building permit, they put in their estimate and get their permit at that estimated level. However, as I think we all know, as homeowners, generally things cost more than you hope and anticipate. So then there's a true up at the end. So for some of these projects that took that much longer, then we'll get a nice slump towards the end. So that is what we saw there. And just to give you a sense of how busy the department was, they're busy on both writing number of violations, we're 12. Technical assistance was 10. They assisted in North Haven for complaints, as well as follow-up investigations and stop work orders and general patrol. So that still continues to be an effort that the building department does. And that is it for the building department. And then for the docks. As we heard from the treasurer's report, we have begun to have all the applications in for the main docks in the inner harbor, which came for the month of January, was 612,972, relative to January of last year, we're up 30%. That was a little over 400,000, so it's a nice start to the calendar year. We'll see how the full year maps out. On that, with, with regard to the outer maintenance area, we have not taken any applications yet, because we've been going through a process to review it and try to come up with a new GPS plan. We've decided that there's a lot of issues that we still want to really feel that it's going to take more time, but we don't want to stop the application process. So we're now going to kick into the 2024 application process for the mooring and anchoring in the outer maintenance. However, we will look to hold a workshop as Mayor Gardella intimated that that's something we're going to look to do across all different areas, where we think it would be important to be hearing from the community and to get some feedback. So we will have an initial proposal, but then we will look for, for feedback and have that workshop. And then when we go to make those changes, which will be the new GPS points and the locations as far, as well as a, any code changes that we might find are going to be necessary, and policies and procedure for both docking, anchoring and mooring. That will not go into effect until the 2025 season. So it'll give us plenty of time to not feel rushed in trying to get the application process started. So just wanted to bring everybody up to speed, and then, as you know, it's pretty quiet on the water. You know, we, other than having the reservations that have gone very well, that would be about it for this time of year.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the department reports?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That brings us to our public comment section. It's for 15 minutes. And limit is three minutes per speaker on anything that we just discussed under the department committee reports.
I have a question. Mary Ann Eddie, 96 Hampton Street. When there's an action item, is there time to address those individually when you go through the action items? Or is this the time to talk about it?
When we bring up the action item that's on the agenda, then if you have anything to say, you can comment on it.
Thank you.
Hi, Peter Connect, Westwood Seaford Divisions. I just wanted to ask if there was any update on the contract.
We are still awaiting a contract from the state of New York. The last communication we had with them was to tell us that they're very busy with the state budget at the moment. And so that we can think it's going to be June or July by the time we see a contract.
We had a meeting, myself, trustee Corish and Jen, right?
Yeah.
To discuss this, where we are, what our next steps are. And basically, we were told we have to wait until the state sends the contract, so.
Okay, so we're like, sort of, everything's.
We're in a holding pattern right now.
We're in a holding pattern. Not officially, we're still doing work to get ourselves ready for the process.
Yeah.
There's internal work we can do and that we've been doing.
Which is to a point, you know, we're thinking of people to put on that committee, which was part of the grant, which was outlined in the grant, so we're considering members to serve on that committee.
Hello, Derek Allen, 36 Richard Stride. When you have that workshop for the outer management area, I'd very much like to put some input into it.
Sure.
And I have a bunch of ideas for.
Fantastic. And we may actually have some committee meetings prior to the workshop, so then we're not just all going into the workshop, you know.
How do I find out about these?
Well, we will, now that we know that you're interested, we will reach out to you as we are looking to.
It'll be publicized on the work, on the website, and also we'll put signs up in Village Hall. Probably going to take out an ad in the paper, you know.
As we do.
There'll be a schedule, this will become a regular schedule.
I'd love it if you reached out to me, I'd be more than happy to give my.
I have a question for you. Do you have a mooring boat rig?
Yes.
Placing moors to you?
Yes. Yeah, and I have managing and, you know, something six. Mornings in the outer area, I have one inside that breakwater also. I've been screening there.
Great, thank, thank you.
Catherine, and then.
Very quickly, Kathleen Mulcahy, 35 Prospect, I have to think about that person. Just wanted to say a public thank you to DPW and the roads. They had those roads, I mean, they were fabulous by 3 o'clock this afternoon, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have somebody on Zoom, Cass?
Two people.
Okay.
Larry Paul.
Larry who?
H, Hagey.
Okay. Hey, hey.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can you state your name?
State your name for us.
Yes, Larry Hag, 27 Bayview Avenue. Yes, I just wanted to, regarding the, the, the proposal of, of using the, the wetlands property for a cut through from the school to get to the, the park. I agree, avoiding the Jermaine-Madison intersection is a good idea. I would just want to go on the record that I would not be in favor of cutting through the cemetery. My late wife is buried there, there's a plot there for me. I'd probably be pretty close to where that intersection would be. One of the things I've been looking at personally is talking to the cemetery itself in terms of upkeep and maintenance of, of some of the old headstones and markers that have become deteriorated and break easily, some of them by damage by deer and whatnot. But I just think an increase in traffic, on, on, you know, unsupervised traffic through there, whether bicycles or whatnot, might be too much traffic for, for that property. As much as it, it might be an educational tool, which I, I agree is, is noteworthy, but there's also the reality of, of, of traffic in a, in a historical area. So again, just to, just stating publicly that I would not be for it.
Okay, okay. Who's next? Okay.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Gardella and trustees. I'm Lisa Stenson Desmore, is president of the Sag Harbor Hills Improvement Association and resided 17 Hillside Drive West. Just wanted to say thank you for the plans to develop a committee respecting the outer management area concerning mooring, which both Steve Williams, Address Property Owners Association and Errol Taylor of the Nineveh Beach Property Owners Association, along with Shia, have expressed our reservations and the adverse impact to our residents in the three associations and communities. They're looking forward to more information about it.
Well, I definitely, you know, would say that you would be included in any conversation. You know, as a resident and as somebody who's in that area, we want your input, so. It was on the agenda tonight, we pulled, I pulled it off because this needs some more work.
It definitely needs a, a lot of work.
So. I appreciate you getting involved, Lisa.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? That's it? Can you pull up Liz, so we have her on the screen? That's possible. That brings us to introduction. Resolution to schedule a public hearing on March 12th, 2024 to amend local law, to amend Village Code 300-14.5, Section A, Section 7, to allow the planning board 60 days after the pre-submission conference, written comment period ends, for the planning board to issue. written comment period ends for the planning board to issue a pre-submission report.
Good evening, board members.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. So this is, the code currently allows thirty days for the planning board to issue a pre-submission report. And since the board only meets once a month, the planning board, they actually need more additional time to issue the report. So here we're seeking, we're asking the board to consider amending the code to allow the planning board sixty days after the written comment period ends for the pre-submission conference to issue the pre-submission report. And this allows the planning board's consultant, the planning consultant, time to prepare a report on the ten, on the site plan that's pending before the board. It's important for them to have enough time to draft the report and have the board actually review the report at a public meeting of the planning board so that it's the board's report that's issued and they agree with everything in the in the planner's report. And this will be setting a public hearing for March, March twelfth.
Okay, do I have a motion to introduce?
I will.
A motion by trustee Plum, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so the resolution is introduced. We have the public hearing on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. So that brings us to our public hearing. So we have a local law amending Village Code three hundred, attachment to table of dimensional regulations to limit the gross floor area per business establishment occupancy, which is square feet to two thousand square feet in the office district.
So, yeah, this this is the public hearing for this local law. It previously used to say N A for the maximum gross floor area per business establishment in the code. And this would have it match the village business restriction, which is two thousand square feet. This is on for a public hearing. We don't have a a resolution of adoption because we have to still hear from the Suffolk County Planning Commission on this law.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by trustee Corus, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
So it is now open. Do we have any public comments on this? Okay. That leads us to the continued public hearing section. We have a local law amending Village Code three hundred dash nine point four, section D, fences, walls and gates to increase the height of permitted gates. So the public hearing is already open, correct?
Yes, and we did make a change in response to Mr. Parker's comments. John Parker made a comment with respect to waterfront lots. So we just clarified that these are actually driveway gates that we're regulating in the historic district. They will not be exceed four feet in height above the natural grade. And then outside of the historic district, they're permitted to be six feet in height above the natural grade. And then we clarified that other entry gates, walkway or other entry grades in a front yard shall not exceed four feet in height above the natural grade, and such gates located in any side or rear yard shall not exceed six feet, except in the case of a waterfront lot where such gate shall not exceed four feet in both the front and rear yard. This mimics the fence provision in the code entirely, and it also reflects the prior code provision on this for entry and other walkway gates.
Do we have any public comment on this? Do we have a a local law that's ready to adopt?
Yes, we do. This has been in final form on your desks for seven calendar days exclusive of Sunday and presented municipal home rule law. We have our feedback from Suffolk County Planning Commission and the Nelson Pope and Voorhees for SECRA, and you're ready to adopt. You have to close the public hearing now.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so closed. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the local law is amended, adopted. That brings us to local law to create Village Code, chapter two fifty-three, tree preservation.
This is a continued public hearing of this local law. It's been before the board for quite some time, and you've heard from the public on different issues. This has been pretty much in this final form for, since the last public hearing. There's been a minor change, I think, just for actually a couple of typos that were fixed. And other than that, it's in final form, and it's actually ready for you to hear from the public one final time, close the public hearing and then adopt.
You have anybody that would like to comment on this publicly? Anybody on Zoom? Motion, excuse me. Anybody say something? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Eileen's hand is up, guys.
Eileen, just bring it up.
Oh, okay. Let's hear from Eileen. We almost had it closed, but go ahead, Eileen.
I was fiddling around here. I couldn't, I couldn't raise my hand. I'm sorry I can't attend. I COVID finally came for me, what can I say? In any case, Jane and I had an opportunity to look at the final draft today, and we did send a letter to all of you regarding the inclusion of a section regarding the revegetation. We understand this may be something that will possibly extend adopting this law. I don't know how that would work if you could consider that and say, well, we'll adopt it with the option to include that. I don't know how that would work, but we would like that to be a consideration in any case.
Thank you. I got the letter, read it. I would like us to adopt this and then maybe amend it if we need to. I think it, we need to get this one over the line, and then we can look at making an amendment.
Any law on the village books in the future?
That's, that's how I feel about this anyway.
We're starting to sound like Congress around here. We got to get something done.
Yeah.
With this in particular.
Yeah, I think we've really looked at this every, from every angle. I appreciate your, your interest and wanting to get all of these finer details to be aligned, but I think it would be great to get this over the line, and then we can absolutely consider.
Yeah, and based on the implementation and results of it.
Right.
And just to add, the, we have a sample of the tree removal application that's also here, and so we can, it would be great to have this in combination. And then that way we can really, you know, direct people. If they are looking to make any changes, they're going to know the process that they need to go through. So it would be a big win.
Any other public comments?
I do have one question from Ms. Vale. Yeah, I don't know if this is possible, but we looked at the North Haven, the North Haven code, and there was a a provision in the penalty area. I don't know if it would be allowed in our code, but it had an additional penalty for violating certain sections as an unclassified misdemeanor, which would potentially increase the fines to, for a certain amount for each day for the violations. I did send that, I believe we sent it to Ms. Kane, to Jean Kane, to see if that penalty could be incorporated without being too onerous. So perhaps that would be in another amendment. I agree.
That's what I would, yeah, that's what I would suggest.
I mean, this is already, this is, this is already probably going to be considered an unclassified misdemeanor because it's upon conviction, a fine of not more than a thousand, and if it's a violation, the max fine under New York state law is a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. So most of, actually, most of the code provisions in in local codes are unclassified misdemeanors. So anything with a with a fine above two hundred and fifty dollars is typically considered an unclassified misdemeanor.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, Liz.
Any other public comments? Motion to close the public hearing?
Move it. Second.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Corus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried, so we now have chapter two fifty-three, tree preservation. And I'd like to, I'd like to thank Eileen and everybody, the trustees, trustee Kane, deputy mayor Hay and Horace and Plum for helping work on this, and we finally got something over the finish line, so.
Great, I'm delighted.
Thank you. And if we need, if we find out that there's things that need to be added or amended, we can certainly address that in the future. Okay.
When this law takes, this law takes effect upon filing with the Office of Secretary of State.
Thank you.
Yep.
So that brings us to our discussion items. First up is the environmental advisory committee presentation.
And Kathleen Mulcahy, thirty-five Prospect, I'll start by saying thank you to the mayor and to the trustees for having us today. I am very proud about the environmental advisory committee. It is one of the first things I did as mayor. Here's a copy of your tape, please. And we've been here advising and the officials as well as the residents on how best to deal with issues that affect our environment. We are comprised of volunteers from the village. I'm not going to read all those names because it can't be sideways. But we're going to go through a very quick presentation just to show you some of the things we did. And the ones that have a star on it are ones that have been done to date. So next slide. We originally in two thousand and twenty, as we were doing the long walk renovation, we added EV chargers to long walk. Not only have those been helpful with EVs, but we've made money on it, about six thousand dollars a year. So that was a nice one. This next one is our Chevy Bolt. We bought one of the first electronic vehicles or electric vehicles bought by a government on Long Island. And our building inspector uses it. And I honestly don't know if half those, like ICE and things like that, but the net net is it is saving our village money every day. So those are two things that we did early on, and now I'm going to introduce Kate Plum.
Thank you. Kate Plum, thirty-three Richard Stride. As we, collaborations with the environmental advisory committee, the other towns and NGOs we've been working with, East Hampton Energy and Sustainability Committee, Surf Rider, Perfect Earth, easthamptoncompost.org, the town of Southampton, Somas Dr. Glover's Glover's Gobler's Lab at a study book, Carbon Crew, Syracoma Partnership, the Peconic Estuary Partnership, South Fork Natural History Museum, Peconic Estuary Protection Committee, Sustainable Southampton Lead Advising in the Town of East Hampton. Those are the organizations we've been working with. Next slide, please. So one of the initiatives we're proud of to be helpful with is the leaf blower and fertilizer flyer in collaboration with the Sag Harbor Partnership, which would pass the leaf blowing regulations in two thousand and twenty, curbing use of fertilizers off scene. As we know, it's a bilingual flyer, and we make it available in local garden centers, hardware stores, real estate offices, and distributed, distributed set of myself. Sorry, you all have to, when you have a, a garden that is not heating that the leaf blowing law. Next slide, please, Kathy. This is the helium balloon ban, you know, all over all Suffolk County, prohibits the sale and release of lighter than air balloons. And this we did in partnership with the East Hampton Town trustees. It gave us a lot of information. They initiated it. Back Sag Harbor Village, to its credit, carried on, you know, quickly backed on with that group and all Suffolk County. Thank you. Okay, Kathy. And also we were proud of the composting at the East Hampton Farmers' Mark, I mean, Sag Harbor Farmers' Market, sorry. But with easthamptoncompost.org, a very successful project in, you know, with initiation from Long Island Organics and the ecological cultural initiative that has a wonderful composting product project in Hampton Bays. So this summer project here in Sag Harbor within seven weeks, with no ads whatsoever, just word of mouth, four hundred pounds of food scraps were diverted from landfills. Next slide, please, Kathy. So what we're working on these days or what's next, a worm composter has been noted, donated to the elementary school to assist in their organic community garden. The South Fork, the actual history museum, the Young Environmentalist there created these pesticide-free yard signs that the residents could up, and I had one in my yard as others have had. And this year, we are partnering with Perfect Earth. We will make signs that are metal. They'll last longer. They're metal. And they're pesticide free, so you can be proud of your lawn and tell everybody in your neighborhood that you are not putting any fertilizers, chemical fertilizers for on your lawn. So the other project that we're interested in is the the national, I'm not ready to, sorry, sorry. The, with a national initiative about curbing single-use plastics, which have increased a great deal, more than two hundred and fifty percent over the years, and thirty percent of it is these disposable utensils. Here I have my bamboo utensils that I carry with me when I go out and provisions have these or had these. But these utensils, this initiative, which is very effective, it's working in cities. It's in New York City. It's in Los Angeles. And we are making, trying to make people aware of the simply problems with the single-use crack plastics, which don't actually ever get used or are not able to be recycled. Thank you, Kathy. And then I want to, quite a lot more. Oh, the Carbon Crew, of course. Dorothy's project, you know, this is amazing, drawdown project from Southampton, and our mission in the Carbon, Carbon Crew project is we empower people to live versable warming, and there are little groups of people that meet, and that most people in our environmental advisory committee have done it, meet with a little group, and you devise your own little participants, your personal climate action plan, what you're going to do. You're not going to buy the large containers of plastic soap powder. You're going to buy the little, you know, the recycled little, or the little pads that you put in your laundry, your laundry detergent instead of using the plastic tubs. So everyday choices, apparently the two-thirds of all emissions, according to the UN of C O T, are household choices if we make individually. And so Carbon Crew is a very favorable project to get people on the real domestic level to change their habits. Thank you. Finished now.
So this is a bit of an update on Climate Smart Communities. For those of you who don't know, it's a New York-based program. It was started in two thousand and nine. There's four hundred and one communities that are registered. That's the first step. There's a hundred and twenty-two statewide that are certified, and there's different levels of certification. The first level is bronze. The second level is silver. Bronze level is Southampton Town and East Hampton Town, and Suffolk County has got a silver level. They also have paid staff that can work on this kind of stuff, but I salute them for the work that they've done. Sag Harbor registered in two thousand and twenty-one. And what is it? And what's the big deal about it? The thing that's really interesting is that there's a framework to help local governments such as us want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And I hope when we get to the point of being certified, we can talk to you about how that has happened here in Sag Harbor.
Can I interrupt you for a second? What exactly do we need to get certified?
Pardon me?
What do, what, you said we need to get certified. What exactly?
That's the next slide.
Okay, good. Sorry. I'm just really interested because this.
Yes, I know. Me too. Okay. So reduce greenhouse gas emissions. That's the one things that are helping. So the new Village LEDs, they're going to cut about forty-eight metric tons of C O two equivalent. That includes methane, stuff like that equivalents per year, and it's going to save us about forty-one thousand dollars. The other thing, the framework that has done to help us is to adapt to the effects of climate change, which includes stormwater runoff, which is important and critical in many different aspects. But one of the rain gardens that we built have given us credit towards Climate Smart Communities. That includes our cooperative work with Southampton Town, Round Pond, Marine Park and Haven Beach. And the task force that have been working on this for three years has been Carol Ostrow from the Sag Harbor Partnership, Nada Gosie, who's a lifelong resident and business owner, Michael Jaffee, a member of this environmental committee. I'm the coordinator, and then our liaison is Tom Gardola and Bob Plum. Okay, so the Climate Smart Communities now, next slide. Oh. Three years and three interns later, we've completed twenty-four actions. There's about a thousand different actions that you can choose from. We chose twenty-four of them. This gives us a hundred and forty-seven possible points. We submitted January fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. We submitted January fifth at twenty twenty-four for bronze status. We need a hundred and twenty points to make it through their review to get to that certification and decision is any day now. The village benefits include points on consolidated funding, which Aiden talks about all the time, our New York State grants. Anytime you apply for a grant in New York State, you have to go through the consolidated funding application. Depending on what you're applying for, you get different points if you're a climate smart community. You can get five points. You can get fifteen points and that's on the basis of a hundred points.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It is. It makes a huge difference.
Yeah, we lost one grand by three points, right? One year, right? It also gives us leadership recognition, which means that Tom will get a letter from the mayor or from the governor, so. Free technical assistance, which is helpful for a village like us. How much, you know, we just don't have that big a staff. And I anticipate that very shortly we're going to get sixty-five thousand dollars in no match grants through the sister program Clean Energy Communities, which is run by NICE RDA. So some of the things that we've done for Clean Energy Communities also gets credit for the in the Clean Energy Community. And next slide, please. Changing channels here for a moment. We have the Sag Harbor Water Quality Initiative, which has been sampling and reporting on that sampling since twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We need to raise about thirty thousand dollars a year, which we do, and the village ships in about twenty-five percent of that. And this is run by Dr. Gobler at the School of Marine and Atmospheric Sciences. It's his laboratory that does the sampling, does the analysis and then writes up the reports. And he's going to be sending his report in this room on March seventh, six o'clock during the Harvard Committee meeting. It's always interesting. If there's a rock star in that particular area, he's a rock star. Very. I don't want to say entertaining, but he is very entertaining. The other thing that we have here, which is not done, but we hope that the village board will appreciate and approve our water quality beach signs. It came out of Dr. Gobler's report last year that we have from time to time, problems with our bathing beaches and our waiting beaches. And he recommended that we put signage there. So this had actually come up from something Aiden, you did years ago, but we never really were able to.
Implement it.
Forward with that.
Yeah.
Well, we would like to be able where we surf rider samples, Haven's Beach, Windmill Beach, Little Northwest Creek, and residents, visitors can add a surf rider water quality reports on their phones using the QR code that goes into the village website. The Pecan and Estuary Partnership, these are good friends of Sag Harbor Village. For those of you who don't know, there's something called the National Estuary Partnership Program, I'm sorry. And there's only in all of the United States, it's the East Coast, the Gulf Coast and the Pacific Coast. There's only twenty-eight estuaries that are approved and recognized by the National Estuary Program. So these people, one of they they get money. They get money down from the EPA. They get money from the bipartisan bipartisan infrastructure law. And in twenty twenty, we got EPA money and that's what built the two rain gardens at Haven's Beach. This year we got another grant that's split in two locations. One, we got a grant for additional rain garden. At Haven's Beach, if you think of the northwest corner outside that road, going towards Cormeria, there's going to be a rain garden there. We've got a permit into the DEC or an application for a permit. And then we want to build a trench drain which will cross that road. I think any of you who've gone to Haven's Beach know after a big rain, you get a big puddle of water and it just sits there, right? Probably until it evaporates. So we want to build a trench drain there that's going to take that water and direct it into the rain garden. The other half of that grant from last year, twenty twenty-three, that we hope to build this year is that another thing flooding, you notice that on Bay Street, there's a lot of flooding. And that's because that road was rated wrong when we put those permeable pavers in in twenty twenty. So what we're going to do is we're going to just tilt that road a little bit so that the water that falls onto Bay Street goes into the permeable pavers and disappears. Yes.
Question, those strains are pitched towards the middle. Don't you have to pick them up and go back, pitch them the other way? You can't do that with the pavement, can you?
Let's talk about it with Rusty and the people who have done the plans, but Dee has been on board with this. So Pecanic Estuary Protection Committee. So these are people, this is like the the towns and the villages and the county all surrounding the Pecanic Estuary. So if you look on the right, there's this signage that the protection committee has paid for for us. It's going to be a twenty-four by forty-six sign. It's very similar to the signs that's at Haven's Beach on alumina. It holds up really well. It does not fade out. It's good shape. And this one is going to be on watershed. And a lot of people don't know what a watershed is. So if you look at that picture there, you can see the insert is a picture of the Pecanic Estuary, which is that body of water between the North Fork and the South Fork going out to where it meets the Atlantic Ocean. And everything that's highlighted in orange is the watershed, which means that any water, any fluids, any anything that falls in that orange area, all drains into the estuary. So this is a committee that's formed that it takes steps to protect that estuary. And one of the things that we want to do is we want to work with Southampton Town, Tommy John is on board with this, the county, because I'm talking about the coves, which is our most polluted water here in Sag Harbor. But we've got like a collection of different bodies that have domain over those coves. So we have Sag Harbor and we have outfall pipes. We have Southampton Town has outfall pipes. There's the county coming in off of Long Beach Road and we have North Haven. So we want to go through and make sure that we know where all the outfall pipes are that are draining into the coves because that's the source of pollution. And then we can discuss, you know, and develop some kind of remedial plans for that. It's also important for understanding flooding, why some of these areas and towns, especially out there, Glover Street, et cetera, et cetera, why they have such flooding when we have high water after big rains. And Deanorm, Mayor Deonora.
Hello, I'm Mayor Deonora. I live at twenty-six Brand Street. And this one needs to start because it's no longer country. Free preservation legislation, joined in efforts underway since two thousand sixteen. Maintain the natural historic character and settings of the village to protect the canopy and healthy tree and vegetation and to encourage new plant dates. Excellent. Renewable energy, community choice aggregation. This allows municipalities to aggregate energy demands and negotiate bulk purchases for residents and small businesses. Solar panels energize East Hampton. Residents can fill out a simple form and also in East Hampton and Sag Harbor too. And they'll be connected directly to Sun Nation to begin the process of figuring out if solar is right for their property. And this is our official Environmental Advisory Committee Charter. Given the success and hard work that the committee has done to date, the village government has decided to codify the committee by taking the following steps. Work with the committee to create a village Board of Trustees approved charter. Assign village of Board of Trustee liaisons, Bob Plum and another to be determined. Formalize the Climate Smart Communities efforts as part of the EAC and include the CSC committee members. Create officers, priorities and processes to ensure consistent and complete coordination with village hall. And now I'm going to pass the baton to Finney, who also introduced his path through the to the park to our environmental.
Well, again, feed it over though. As I stated, for the walk to Massimic Park has been an issue my entire life. I only remember it being dangerous. So a couple of months ago, I came up with the idea of a cut through on a Southampton Town owned parcel of land on Madison Street. I discussed this idea with Councilman Sfumoni and later with John Shandra on the Open Spaces Committee, who had a similar idea. Slide. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. Margaret Need. And from our own trustee Plum, it is said that one measure of a community's help is the level of volunteerism. And this group has no exception to that. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your hard work. That brings us to the American Cruise Line, Shelley Hatfield. American Cruise Line, Ellen DeGuardia, and who is the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce?
Hello, I'm DeGuardia. When I'm not on Main Street, I live at twenty-six Bird Street, New York. I'm assuming that I'm here to give reason why the Sag Harbor Chamber of Commerce is in favor of more business coming into our membership. It seems like it would be self expounding, but I will, I will give what we discussed at our chamber meeting last night. Basically, you know, the chamber's mission statement is the chamber provides tools focused on the development of sustainable business solutions for the local business economy and for the benefit of our members. So to have a new revenue stream coming into the village for our membership that is not coming with cars, that is coming on specific dates with specific plans and payments made ahead of time in most cases to businesses, to not-for-profit area, you know, groups in the area, to other venues. It's kind of is, as we, I've already been quoted as saying, a no brainer that we would be in support of that. I did, you know, I like to do my due diligence, certainly as President of the Chamber of Commerce. So I did meet with with Shelley, who I see. See I'm right up there. And got to hear what their clientele is looking for. And basically the chamber is, you know, looking forward to working with American Cruise Lines to make it as beneficial for our membership and as non-intrusive to people who seem to feel that it might be intrusive. They're coming in and Shelley can give you more of the details, but they're coming in, they're going to be anchored outside the breakwater. People will come in via tender to Long Warf, approximately a hundred people. And we, the chamber is working with through our membership with different itineraries that the American Cruise Line couldn't look at and decide that they want to work with. And again, it it really is just a way of having business come into the village for our members that's not coming in by cars, which is a really good thing for from our perspective. And it's also pre-arranged and prepaid for in most cases. So, you know, we're having groups coming in, they're going somewhere, they're doing something. And then they're moving on to another place. And it's it's revenue for members of the chamber. And I know a lot of people feel that maybe Sag Harbor doesn't need more business, but if you talk to our membership with increased rents and what's going on with how people shopping habits are, it's really not the case. We have a lot of members who are, we've lost a few members who've moved out of the village recently. There's we've got members who won't rejoin because they don't want to pay the fee because they're concerned that their, you know, business is not doing as well. So this is a, again, a no brainer for us to say that the chamber would support American Cruise Lines being in the village.
Okay, can we hear from Shelley Hatfield? Do you want to explain somehow or how this is going to work, how the boat will come in and?
We need some different.
Yeah, we don't have a screen of her.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, um, thank you for allowing me to speak today and Ellen, thank you for your support from the chamber. Would like to tell you just a little bit about American Cruise Lines and what sets us apart. I think the the name American Cruise Line sometimes gives a image of a large cruise ship. We are not that. We are a a cruise line that has been in business for approximately thirty years, family owned. We're based out of Guilford, Connecticut. So on a clear day, as our president and CEO says, he can actually almost look across and see Sag Harbor from where we are. It is, his father started the company and the three sons operate it now. We're US built. Our ships are all built by a shipyard in Maryland. So we are a US flagged, US crude, US owned. And we're very small. We like to say that we're boutique ships. We carry approximately one hundred guests. And those guests are average age seventy, affluent, well-traveled and well-educated. And they like to come into smaller communities specifically to learn about the history, the culture and the art. When we come in, we're very respectful to the communities. We work with communities in partnership. And we pride ourselves on that. I'm bringing people in and actually having an economic impact when we do so. So I've already spoken to several of the businesses in Sag Harbor to see what type of experiences we may be able to provide guests. Just to give you a general idea of what those might be, we've spoken with Bay Street Theater. We would love to be able to do something with them. They're trying to think of ways that we could offer an experience to our guests, even though we are in during the week and during daylight hours. We've also spoken with Kid Squid Brewery. And so we're looking forward to offering a tasting with our guest that will be already pre-arranged. It will be, as as Ellen said, we will pay for all of those for our guests to come in. So usually that's something that's capped at maybe twenty people. So we do things in little small groups as we move people throughout the community. We are also interested in working with the church, the Whaling Museum and the American Hotel. I can tell you, I look forward to coming up. I'll be there next week. And we'll be staying at the American Hotel and actually visiting Sag Harbor for the first time. So the dates that we're looking to come in, in two thousand twenty-four, we would have two dates in May, one date in June and five dates in October, and all of those are weekdays. We would not be coming in with transportation. So we would tender in, as Ellen said, our tenders hold forty-eight guests. Most of the time they're not even full. They kind of run on a loop circuit from the ship. And then we may be bringing maybe twenty to forty guests in at a time and then taking them to these pre-arranged experiences.
Right. Do we have any questions for Shelley? Does the board have any questions?
Nope, I don't have anybody else.
What's that?
I have a question. When you bring in the tender, Caesar, Mary Ann Eddie ninety-six Hampton Street, when you bring in the tender from the boat into Sag Harbor, I would like to believe that you guys are renting a lift there at the transient dock. And that's where you're going to unload and offload your passengers.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Somebody has their hand raised, Kathy.
You said again.
Okay.
Uh, hi, good evening.
Hi.
So is the the stop in Sag Harbor part of your Nike Seaports cruise?
It is. That's correct.
Okay, so there's your cruise ship already comes into Sag Harbor?
Currently, we do not. So this will be the first time that we will be operating this itinerary. It's new for us. We will also be visiting on this. We will either depart from or to New York and Boston. So those are our end point and beginning. And then we will visit Plymouth, Old Saybrook, New London and Sag Harbor.
Okay, it's it's already, you know, advertised for sale.
Yes.
The public. And then where would your ship? I guess anchor, since you're going to need a tender to bring the passengers.
Right. And I do not know the exact location. Perhaps Jean does. I am not, I apologize, but I do not know the exact location on the map.
Bob, where he is here, our harbor master, but I think at this point, wait to see on the days that you come in to see where boats are anchored and at that point. I mean, Bob, if you want to add anything, we would direct you to what the proper area would be. But it'll be determined, you know, when you come.
Shelley, I have a quick question. Is American Cruise Lines a unique operation or there are other similar operations that operate in the Northeast?
So we are unique in the fact that we are US, US flagged. So that means that unlike large cruise ships that must touch a foreign port, we don't have to do that because we are US flagged. The coastal catamarans that we will be bringing in, we call them coastal cats. The American Glory and the American Eagle are our two newest vessels, and those are unique. It's a unique design. It is made to have a very shallow draft of about eight to eight and a half feet. And that will, that allows us to get into coastal areas without disturbing the seafloor.
And yourself contained as far as the ship's operation goes, you don't need pump-out boats or any shore services to maintain daily living onboard?
We won't need any shore services. Everything, we're, we're contained within ourselves.
Okay.
And one thing I would add, as we began to hear about the American Cruise, we called some of the other ports who, you know, a lot of people think of Bar Harbor and the concerns about the big cruise ships, the 3,000 to 5,000 ships that go in there. And when we spoke to a couple of people there and asked them, did they have experience with American Cruise? We only heard really positive feedback, clearly because the size is one that any village or town does like to work with as opposed to the 3,000 to 5,000, which can be extremely overwhelming. In fact, Bar Harbor put into, placed a new rule that only, they're going to limit 1,000 people coming off a boat a day. Now, that sounds just, you know, beyond what we could even anticipate. So when we did hear that these would be off-season months, middle of the week, makes you kind of think of Harbor Frost, that you just had a very busy Saturday in February, which was very positive for Chamber and for people who wanted to have fun. And you could almost imagine that on a Wednesday, or whatever day it is exactly on those dates, that you're going to see some nice activity on those elf times. So I think that's the part that makes it potentially a good fit.
I guess for perspective, how many people fit on a jitney? About 60, maybe? There's about 60 pallets. A jitney is our local bus service that takes us to New York City and back, and that's when they pull into town, they discharge about 60 people on a regular jitney, I guess.
Is your lodge carried on your vessel?
Could you repeat that?
Is, is your lodge carried on your vessel?
Yes, it is. So you can imagine with a vessel that only holds 100 guests that it's small, so it's a very small tender.
Derek, how many days would you be in Sag Harbor for yours?
So for this year, we would be looking at eight dates total.
At one time?
So we would arrive, you could estimate that we would arrive at 9:00 AM and we would depart by 5:00 PM.
And basically, May and October.
Basically, May and October with one.
One June day, yeah. So we're not talking June, July, high season here.
Hello, Chris Brandell, 26 Grand Street. So for clarification, you're not planning to, to land here in July and August, is that correct?
That's correct. For this year, I believe we have one date in 2025 that's currently on the schedule for July, and no other dates over the next two years. So one date in July, 2025.
Okay, you're just confusing because you look at this, it looks like you had about four dates in July and August, so maybe that's incorrect.
That's correct. We, we only have one in 2025 and none in 2024.
In terms of sewage discharge, what do you pump out? Do you do that back in Connecticut or do you go out to sea?
So that would be based on if there's something that is one of the docks, one of the larger docks that we would actually come alongside that has any type of pumping capabilities. But we, but that's where we would actually go in if we have pumping capabilities in Boston or New York. That's where we would pump out.
Somebody on Zoom had a question, Cassie?
I had another question.
We'll come back to you, Lisa. Somebody else has a question. We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
I may have missed this, but I understand it would be eight days over the course of a few months. 30 people in a skiff that would come into the village, but how many, if the boat holds 130 people coming in, does that mean that that little skiff makes three trips into the village?
It would make several trips, so it would go out, it would come from the ship, bring guests in, and then they would go on their exploration, whatever their experience may be, and then we would go back, get the other, come back into town, and we would kind of run that back and forth throughout the day. Most likely, it would be two times in the morning, two times in the afternoon. But I don't.
So while the first group is here, do they then leave before the next group comes in? No. So cumulatively, we're not talking about 30 people. We're talking about potentially 100 people, correct?
Correct. And you may have 20 people at Kid Squid, and you may have 20 people who are at the church, and 20 people at the Whaling Museum. They would be dispersed throughout the experiences.
I just wanted to clarify the numbers of people who would come in because it sounded like it would only be 30, but it's really the entire ship, basically.
Correct. The entire ship, 100 guests.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know offhand if you would be anchoring or mooring the vessel?
I do not know. I would I would say mooring the vessel because that's what we've done in some other locations. But I do not know 100%. I can check on that and we'll get back to you.
Okay, so we're going to come back to Lisa. I've had a question.
Okay, thank you. So I see you have a New England Islands cruise that stops on Martha's Vineyard. Do you dock, moor, anchor in Egbertown or Vineyard Haven? I presume not Oak Bluffs.
Um, right. I believe we have done both, and I need to see where we are. So I am typically the experience person who goes into the community, so knowing whether we are anchoring or mooring or which location we're at, at Martha's Vineyard, I'm not 100% sure. But the names that you just mentioned, Lisa, those are names that resonate, so I've heard those before.
Sure. That's where the ferries come in for
Yes.
visitors and their vehicles.
Okay, Kathleen? Thank you, Lisa.
Sure.
A comment to the board. Can we, Jean, to your point, after this is over in October, look as a village about limiting the number of people so that we don't, you know, 100-person boat is one thing, 1,000-person boat will be a whole different animal. So if we could just sort of make a plan that we would look at this post-October.
And, and.
What the right number is.
And I think that's right, you know, to experience it, that's how it goes, and then as opposed to setting a plan that might not be the right plan to set.
Thank you.
And this permission would be specific to this vessel? In other words, there wouldn't be like a car wash for other?
No.
Well, I'm not sure if we're even giving permission. This is, we don't have that authority, just so everybody is clear. This is an inform, this is to share the information with everybody. So we all understand, there's a lot of, looking at social media, there's been a lot of misinformation, there's been a lot of concern, and this is an opportunity for us to meet because it's important for the village. I understand the Chamber's interest in this, and I understand the Sag Harbor is a very, it's a lovely place to, very desirable place to visit, but I think keep some perspective about this, that the jitney brings in 60 people per bus like all day, every day throughout the summer. So I welcome you coming into the village, and I hopefully it's all going to work out for everybody, but we will revisit it at the end of the summer so that we can see how we plan for the future.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Shelley.
Ellen DeGuardia, again, I just wanted to add that Shelley is, as she said, she's going to be coming next week, Wednesday, I believe. And I'm going to take her to some of the members that she's been in touch with to meet. She's also going to be coming, speaking before the Chamber membership at one of our meetings, or be, do it via Zoom. We haven't determined because we haven't figured out which meeting is going to, is going to work best. But that, all of this is just information-wise and you know, as I stated before, as President of the Chamber, business-wise, it's a no-brainer for us. But I did also want to say that personally, as somebody who's lived in this area for 42 years and with my hat as a private citizen, I was very skeptical about how I was going to feel about this. And getting the correct information and getting the facts, which you look at social media and that's not what's pretty much out there, really is what made me feel better about doing what I have to do as President of the Chamber, which is go with what the membership feels, which is, this is a benefit to our businesses. So I didn't have to have that conflict personally and, you know, professionally, if you will, between that, after talking with Shelley and looking at all the information. And I know there was concern about the July and August dates, and that would be something that I think we would want to speak to American Cruise Lines about what it would be like to show up in July versus what it's like to come in the dates that they have planned for 2024. It would be a much better experience for their passengers, not only for the businesses, which wouldn't be able to offer what they can offer off-season, in full season. So I just, that was just addition, but if anybody wants to make sure that, you know, they know what's going on, we'll probably open the Chamber meeting to non-Chamber members if somebody wants to come and hear more from Shelley when we do have her via Zoom or in person. So we'd be able to do that too, so there can be more information and facts getting out there.
Truly helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll take one more question, and then we're going to have to move on. So who else do you have? Silas, hold on, John.
Great, thank you. Silas Mortar, 175 Main Street. I just wanted to clarify, is the total capacity rating for the boat, for the ship, 100? Or is there, are there 100 rooms with double or more occupancy?
That's a good question. So full occupancy, if there is a head in every bed, it's 109. If, but I will let, I will say that most of the time, even if it's sold out, full capacity is below 109 because some individuals travel alone and they have a double bed, so you know, you can expect between 100 to 105 full capacity.
Okay, thank you.
John? Finish it off.
John Harper, 33 Sherwood. Two, two quick comments. There's also a crew. You have a crew of what, 40 or 50?
We do, yes, correct.
That adds to the, to the number. Also, just, and I'm not speaking for or against this, but the size of the boat, I believe, is 220 feet. Is that correct?
I need to look at the exact dimensions, but that sounds, that sounds about right.
The point is only that it's larger than almost any of the yachts we normally see, you know, in the summer. And, and the, so where it's anchoring or mooring, I think is significant because it will have an impact in terms of congestion, in terms of the view, et cetera. And the village could have control over that if they're anchoring within the village's jurisdiction.
Right.
Thank you, John. Okay, thank you, Shelley, for your presentation. And Ellen, thank you for coming forward and giving us the facts. So I appreciate that. So that brings us. You're welcome. Thank you. That brings us to Susan Rebold from Citiescape Consultants, who's going to talk to us about a cell coverage study that's being done by East End Communities. It's a collaboration to see where we're lacking in cell service, and including the village of Sag Harbor. This is an independent study. Am I correct, Susan?
Yes, that is correct. Yes. Thank you very much for having me this evening. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. Given the weather conditions, my flight was delayed, delayed, and got so delayed that I wasn't going to be able to make it out from JFK. So I'm going to share my screen and pull up a presentation to help walk through the discussion. Give me just a moment, please. All right. So Citiescape Consultants works only for local government on the topic of wireless telecommunications. We are a team of engineers, legal, and planning professionals that have been in business with the group since 1997. We are, uh-oh, there we go. And so when I talk about wireless network planning and what we focus on as a company, we're talking about the wireless towers or buildings that have the antenna on them to make your cell phones or your laptop or your tablet or whatever device you're using that's through your wireless subscriber. AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, Dish Wireless, and potential small wireless facilities that are being deployed in the area to make a complete network so that you have a robust cell coverage plan for the entire area. And we start our research by looking at all of your existing infrastructure. We want to know where the existing antenna are. We go and we personally catalog all that information. And then we produce a series of maps that show where service area is lacking. And then we talk about how you can potentially fill that area with the infrastructure that's going to be needed so that you have complete coverage. But not only that you have complete coverage, you also have the infrastructure that fits with the landscape of the community. And we have done a similar project with the Town of East Hampton. And we're looking now to do a project as a group with Southhold and North Haven Village and Sag Harbor and Shelter Island. So I'm sharing this information with you to see if you would be interested in doing this group project. So this is an example of what we did in East Hampton, where we went out and each of these areas identified with either a question mark or a checkmark. And these numbers or letters represent existing infrastructure that we went to. And we go out, we identify and catalog who's on that infrastructure, the condition of the infrastructure. We verify the location, we record data so that when we come back, we can put together the maps. We also provide to you, when we're finished, an inventory catalog that shows an image of the facility and the location and the information, some of the information that we collected. If you have Esri GIS accessibility, then we provide this to you in a map layer so that you can import it into your GIS network, and then you can have that for information purposes as you plan future sites. So once we've looked at the location, then we begin our mapping. This is a sample of our mapping that we did for the Town of East Hampton. And part of our mapping exercise is to purchase high-resolution geodata that helps us have more exact information with regards to terrain, tree cover, building heights, building types, because all of those variables play into the propagation pattern that you're going to see. This particular map is showing the propagation coverage from existing sites. Areas in yellow represent in-building, outdoor, and vehicle coverage. When you get into areas that are green, you have primarily just in-vehicle coverage and not necessarily coverage inside of a building. The areas in purple are outdoor coverage. And then these areas that have no coloration, which is where we're most really interested in, are areas where there is no coverage and where the largest gap is. So then, once we have this information, we compare this to your census data or to your, perhaps your Chamber has data about your high-season visitor rates or economic development. We try and get as much information as possible. We plan out these, how to fill these areas based on 10 years out. So we're looking. So we're looking not just at five G, which is still under deployment, but we're looking at six G. And we're also looking at your peak high season area because it doesn't do you any good to not plan for that that peak area. And we also look at the coverage by provider. Because one footprint for one provider, say, for example, AT&amp;T could be vastly different than that of Dish Wireless or Verizon. And by knowing we're not, we'll show you these maps, we're not going to earmark publicly who they are. Because we're really not trying to promote, we wanna stay away from trying to promote one plan over another because that's not the purpose of what we're doing. We're really trying to find commonalities between areas where there are gaps. And if you look at these maps in a contrast and comparison perspective, you can see that this particular geographic area by the three main providers, they all have a gap there. So looking then at the zoning, what's going on in these areas, perhaps from a zoning perspective, that's creating a gap? And is the zoning code that might be creating that gap a barrier to entry, which is the Telecommunications Act says that you can't do that? So then we compare all of this to your code, and if we find that you might need to tweak your code, we work with you on recommendations on how to do that. We also look at, say, for example, in contrast and comparison, this particular provider has coverage here, but these two do not. So what's going on here? Is there room for co-location at this site? Or is this site specifically built for that one service provider? And is this geographic area now going to need more infrastructure? Because that location doesn't lend itself to co-location. So we look at this from a variety of perspectives and bring this data to you. And it might be that we also find, based on capacity, that the area may, some of these areas may already have wireless infrastructure. But because of the number of people per square mile and the number of of people using their cell phones simultaneously, these areas may need more infrastructure because the capacity of the network is too low to accommodate the number of subscribers per square mile. So again, once we have all that data, we'll compare it to your policies that you have in place. And we will put together some scenarios for your consideration on how to fill those gaps. And we work with you on these scenarios. And then we promote using a community survey or poll to engage the community, to weigh in on the solutions. And that has been that that feature that we bring has been very helpful for the community to have a voice in how the town, excuse me, the village comes up with a solution. And then we put all this together in a document. And we make sure that it's consistent with all the federal regulations that are in place so that you're not creating something that is not going to be compliant with federal regulation. And I have some more slides on some examples of questions that we ask. And we tailor the surveys to each community. And it's not just about the deployment pattern that they prefer. We're also looking at what's important to the community. So for example, this question, what is most important to you? The choices could be good connectivity with minimal visual impact, excellent cellphone connectivity, willing to tolerate worse service for less infrastructure, aesthetic and visual appearance. And then we look at the the votes and we share those percentages with you so that you can understand from the participants in the survey what's most important to them as you move forward in making decisions. And then this is, these are examples of some scenarios that we put together for a community in New Jersey. And then the community can pick, you know, what they like. This particular deployment plan in the middle is showing how to fill in these coverage gaps with macro cells only and how the use of those thirteen macro cells go from this air, this this really poor service scenario to a complete servage and service and coverage scenario. And then we also show a small wireless build out, we show a macro wireless build out so that the community can see and have access to various suggestions or, you know, solutions. And then we look at, okay, once you've identified these areas and you pick the solution that you want, what do you want it to look like? Are you, is the community supportive of non-concealed facilities? Or is the community only wanna see concealed facilities? I believe your current code already has in there that you prefer and only want concealed facilities. So kudos to you all for coming up with that solution already. When you have an existing facility or building that they can go on, that's considered a co-location on a base station. So these are examples in East Hampton of concealed wireless facility base stations. And I noticed when I was there last week or two weeks ago, I think you do have at least one religious institution that has a concealed facility behind louvers that look very similar to this facility in East Hampton. So I'd be curious to know if for sure that is a similar facility. But you have those as precedences going forward, which is great. And then we look at small wireless facilities because we do anticipate you needing small wireless facilities. Small wireless facilities are already being deployed in East Hampton. And we anticipate that pattern to branch out to the north. This is an example of a non-concealed small wireless facility in East Hampton out towards Montauk. And the small wireless facility antennas are much smaller. Sometimes they can go on an existing utility pole. More times than not, though, we see that they get replaced. And because most of these facilities are designed for single tenant facilities, then you end up getting them side by side because that would then mean that all four service providers need a site. And so we wanna address that scenario by perhaps encouraging co-location and having them be concealed. This is an example of a small wireless facility that's concealed in comparison to these other two that are not. So there are lots of options available to make those more concealed and compatible with your streetscapes that you already have in in Sag Harbor. I just have just a few more quick scenarios to run through. That once we identified the gaps in coverage, we also then look at, well, what public properties are in those gaps? And are they available for future facilities? Those I did, those areas can actually be built into your land use regulations as priority sites, if that's a route that you want to go. So for example, these areas that are identified alphabetically with a diamond, those are actual properties that are owned by the city of Coral Springs in Florida, where they are promoting the use of those properties. And then these areas that are alphabetized with yellow circles are showing areas where we anticipate needed future infrastructure, but where no public land is available. This is an example of looking at various zoning districts and doing an analysis on the areas where there are gaps. So these areas here on the right that are brown shaded, those are gaps. And then we were looking at the zoning districts to see how many, what the percentage of gap area is zoned a certain zone so that we can see more clearly if that's a barrier to entry. And we recently did a regional wireless master plan in northern Westchester County. And this is an example of the entire geographic area that we looked at. There are seven communities that were part of this study. And it's what we're proposing that you might wanna consider in your region. And the reason for that is is cost. If there's an interest in doing this study, the more communities that you can bring into the project greatly reduces the cost than if you were doing it as a single entity. Each community would end up with their own individual plan. But it would be done as a as a large scope. We also go one mile beyond the perimeter of your jurisdiction. Because any wireless facility in that one mile perimeter greatly impacts your actual coverage and capacity within your jurisdiction. And so it, we would have a false reading if we didn't include the the one mile perimeter. And so the the end result would be a comprehensive plan that is supported by the citizenry and the industry. It's a ten-year deployment plan. You may or may not have code changes based on what the outcome is. I can't predict what that is until after we see the maps. And right now, again, there's the the potential communities that have shown interest so far have been Sag Harbor and North Haven Village and Southhold. I've also talked briefly with Shelter Island, but I don't know of their level of interest at this point in time. And so I thank you for allowing me to bring this opportunity to you. And I'm happy to answer questions because I know that was a lot of information in a short period of time.
I just would, I would say just that I did speak to the mayor of North Haven, Chris Fiori. And he's interested. I also received a letter from the town of Southhold. They're very much interested and asked us, you know, to take a good look at this. I've said, I've always said that, you know, cell service is part of the emergency service because people pick up their cellphone now when there's a problem and they they call nine one one. They're not usually calling from a landline. So it's important. I think that this would give us an independent study of where we are, what coverage we have, what we don't have, and what recommendations can be made as to where, what would be a good plan to solve those those problems. So that's why you're here today and why you're making this presentation. It's something that I support us doing. And those words, comprehensive plan, came up, which is something we're we're in the process of forming. So this could be a part of it.
It's an essential part of our infrastructure and we need to do our due diligence on this and look at, you know, I like the idea that it goes out for ten years and is able to project what the use will be. The industry changes all the time, technology changes, so.
And the scale that you get, the scale that you get by teaming up with the other communities.
You know, you're talking, and correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, but to do this individually, it would be close to almost a hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Well, not not quite that much. I've got a a screen share up now that individually, it would be around sixty thousand dollars for each community. But if we can include three communities, it'll bring it down to about thirty five thousand. And if we can bring in a fourth, it'd be around twenty eight thousand. And a large part of what that initial cost is and why it really is the same for each community is that on the front end, we build a collector app that's specific for the community with the high resolution geodata. And that's a large cost of the project. And so if we can share that and spread that cost out, then everyone benefits from it. The number of days that we would devote to doing the assessments is about the same for each community. And each community would have in-person meetings and Zoom meetings and presentations and the poll and the review of the code for that that price. So it's because we could come up and we could consolidate our trips to do the assessments and do it all at one time, then you get a share of the cost of the engineer who would come with me. I would be the one coming out as the planner. I'd be accompanied by one of our engineers, who is actually the one who would be doing the propagation mapping. And we find that that works really well because it enables him to also see the community and understand the uniqueness of each community. And because we do it this way, there's no cookie cutter project. Everyone's master plan and analysis is is unique to them. And it's important to have the engineer available, you know, to do that. So we can really consolidate and and flatten that cost out for everyone when we bring more in at one time.
Any other, any other questions?
I have one question. There happens to be a Verizon tower in this building, but it's only one service. Can you have multiple, I think you call them co-co, um, towers or something or?
Right, that. That would be a co-location and it would all depend on the accessibility to the rooftop and what is all on the rooftop, if there's room for additional tenants. And if there's room for the ground equipment inside or outside the building to support the additional co-locations.
Take care.
You had a comment?
I do. I just wanna say I appreciate the rigor that you bring to this presentation. I also appreciate that the data that you would be providing through this study would be our data of coverage maps as opposed to individual provider datas. I know that when we looked at presentations, proposals made by an individual provider a couple of years ago, it was much more difficult than pulling teeth to get that provided to give us information about the RF maps, the coverage maps. Having that information ourselves, understanding our own gaps, we can help solution the problem as opposed to being at the mercy of the providers.
Yep.
And so greatly appreciate this as a way to getting data that allows us to help solve the problems ourselves.
It was even hard getting that out of them.
It was impossible.
Yeah. But you can't make an informed decision.
Exactly, correct.
You're just shooting in the dark and, you know, hoping for the best.
I think, yeah, I, like I said, I'm all for doing this study and so we we can be informed moving forward with our cell service, come up with a plan. So, thank you, Susan.
Well, thank you. I look forward to further discussions. Thank you again for the opportunity. And I'm really sorry I wasn't there in person. I was looking forward to being back up there this week.
I'm I'm interested in the survey, the survey that to survey the residents of the village. So how would you do, just a quick question, how would you go about doing that or getting that, if that's those surveys out?
Well, we put it into a Google survey document. And we include the images and the maps specific for the community. And then we rely on you to advertise that link. We've had communities put it on their website. We've had direct mail. We've had communities that have used social media and advertisements to get out the link. We've had them use a, a, um, oh my gosh, as the scan, you know.
QR code.
QR code, thank you. Put a QR code so that they can access it on their wireless devices. And we've also provided paper copies for people who don't have access to wireless services or don't use wireless services so that they can still participate.
One last quick question. How long does this process take from start to start to finish?
We can do it in about twenty four weeks. If it's, if if that's the goal, we can expedite through in about twenty four weeks. But we really follow your lead, you know, what are your advertisement requirements? What is going on in the community that might also, I mean, you have so many great projects going on right now. I really enjoyed listening to the presentations prior. And so you may have some things that might take precedence to this project. And so if you need to say, okay, well, we need to stage this out a little ways, we can do that as well.
But I do think it's important that, but tell, tell me if I'm mistaken, that we, that your engineer and you were out here during our peak season at some point because that's when the cell coverage here is the worst.
Yes, yeah, it's July, August, June, July.
Exactly.
Yeah, we don't need to be out, we actually prefer to come when it's not so crowded so that we can move around more freely. Um, and not get held up in, in traffic. We, we don't need to um, be out there in peak season for them to be able to. Design a network around the peak season.
Okay, okay, great.
Good to know.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night.
So that, that brings us to our action items. Uh, resolution, February twenty twenty four, establishing a tree removal permit application fee. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, a second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Next, we have a resolution, February twenty twenty four. Authorizing representation on behalf of the village of Sag Harbor. And this is authorizing. It says resolved that the village of Sag Harbor hereby thanks John Parker. For his work and his role in obtaining and furthering CPF sewer expansion grants with the town of East Hampton. And it be further resolved that the village of Sag Harbor Board of Trustees hereby authorizes John Parker. To represent the village in matters with the town of East Hampton regarding. And limited to the sewer expansion and community preservation fund grants at no cost to the village. For the twenty twenty four calendar year. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Corus.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. And we have resolution, February twenty twenty four, clarifying representation, which I think we just did. Of the village of Sag Harbor. So this, this would clarify, I don't know if council is present. Who we appoint, that we have the authority to appoint certain people to represent the village in certain matters.
Specific matters.
Specific, right, correct.
I'm here if you have a question.
Yes, so uh, I just want to clarify what we're about to vote on, which is clarifying the representation. What I said is that we have the board, mayor and board have the authority to appoint somebody to represent them in specific matters. That pertain to the village.
Correct. That's what this resolution is acknowledging. The village Board of Trustees is the board. With the authority under New York State general municipal law and New York State village law. To interact with other municipalities and come to agreements like intermunicipal agreements, et cetera. And if you then designate someone else to interface with those other municipalities on your behalf, you should really do so by resolution. So it's clear not only for the board who's representing you, but also for the person going to that other municipality to know that they have your support. In what they're saying to those, to those other municipalities.
Just a, as a practical matter, and not to be difficult, we only meet once a month. So if we want someone to go to a meeting, do we have to wait?
We would have to call a special meeting and, and appoint that person.
Right, and usually you should really think about like appointing this person, just as you did for Mr. Parker. For a calendar year period, like he's working on a project with trustee Corish for the sewer extension and CPF grants. And he's doing a great job representing the village. And for that, you're doing it for a calendar year. So you don't have to reappoint him every month or appoint him, you know.
It's project based in some.
Exactly.
Or role based.
Yeah, and expertise based, I imagine.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by trustee Corus, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, approving appointment of Nicholas Colachi as QA QI paramedic. This is for uh, Mr. Colachi worked for us in the past, but this QA QI is who he reviews. The uh, paperwork that's submitted for PCR. And uh, makes recommendations to the cores, how they can better, you know, do their, do their job in, in detail. In the paperwork. So I have a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor, hey, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, approving appointment of Sueit Bocretian. As alternate member of the Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review. I have spoken to Sueit. She needs to come down and be sworn in, which she promised me she would. This is now, I told her, this is the, several times we've done this, that she needs to take care of this. So she promised me she would. By this weekend. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, to accept donations.
Always accept donations, but donations.
And now we go silent? Do I have a motion?
What are the donations?
LVIS.
The LVIS, the Sag Harbor Partnership, when they donated, when they gave us the check.
Gotcha.
And then a gentleman donated a hundred dollars to the police department.
Very good.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor, hey, seconded by trustee Corus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, approving the appointment of Tin Hoso as building inspector. Effective March first, twenty twenty four. So we will be hiring Tin.
So moved.
As our new building inspector. Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, approving the provisional appointment of Kathleen O'Grady as accountant clerk. Effective February fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, approving the appointment of Rosemary.
Rosemary.
Oh, excuse me, Rosemary?
Rosemarie.
Rosemarie Cassacelli. I got that right. I got. That's what it is.
Or is it French Italian?
This is gonna get better. As secretary to the mayor, effective February twenty first, twenty twenty four.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Corus, seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with the Sag Harbor Historical Museum.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor, hey.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane.
Authorizing.
Auth, uh, sign agreement. You're authorizing.
It's, 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 it's the Bronx version.
Oh, yeah, there's, well, I think we know. Aye.
Okay. So, so moved. Who made the motion in the second? We have motion deputy mayor, hey, who seconded? Trustee?
Trustee Kane.
Resolution, February twenty twenty four, authorizing the mayor to sign a proposal with D and B engineers and architects. For the annual stormwater management and program services and MS four permit compliance. This is, this is pretty important, so.
These are the new ones, right? The new firm?
No, they're not a new firm. We've done them. I think it's a big, this is a big concern, our stormwater runoff and how it's managed and mitigated.
So moved.
Forward. Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Corus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, authorizing the mayor to sign First Amendment to Buildings. And Rooftop Lease Agreement with Verizon Wireless.
Want to make the motion?
Motion by trustee Corus, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, authorizing the use of reserve funds representing the proceeds from paid parking. Yes.
Okay. So I remember when paid parking came up and it was being discussed back and forth. And the idea was that this was gonna go onto sidewalks and pedestrian safety. And I assume that when we're transferring these funds, it's going, I know that these funds aren't segregated per se. Someone's keeping an accounting of it. And money's going from paid parking and into sidewalks. Um, I would really encourage and like to say that um, I think we can probably rally the environmental advisory committee. To come up with a way to um, incorporate public concern and suggestions. I mean, I think right now Liz Vale, she gets like the legal end of it, like people suffer and fall and they threaten legal action. You know, this needs to be fixed and we've got uh, the guys in the red trucks are going around, riding around and they see different poets. But there's not really input from people who are walking, um, people who are taking their kids to school. People that are avoiding certain blocks when they go out for a walk to exercise. Cause they know that the sidewalks are crumbling and disconnected, discombobulated. So I think that it'd be really helpful to be able to somehow get input from the public. And you know, I just had a case de conference with one of my colleagues back here on the committee. And you know, we'll spread it around to the rest of the group. And I think that this is something that we could outline a way to, to get. Um, comments and input from the public as to where um, they see that um, sidewalks need to be.
Prioritized.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And where there could be like new sidewalks.
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you.
What about, what about green infrastructure, something that's permeable or is that something that we should?
Favors and stuff like that, especially in low lying areas, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Second, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, twenty twenty four, authorizing the use of funds. From the sewer reserve account for three spot repairs on Main Street.
Yep, we just need to allocate the funds for the repairs. So I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by trustee Corus, second, seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, to approve the service listing for the Volunteer Ambulance Corps Service Award Program.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second, seconded by trustee Corus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, for a budget adjustment for Suffolk County Police Revenue Sharing.
So moved.
Motion by deputy mayor, hey.
Second.
By trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so carried. Resolution, February twenty twenty four, budget transfers. That's all I got, budget transfers.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Authorization to accept twenty twenty three bank reconciliations and collateral reports.
So moved.
Motion, motion by trustee Corus, seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Excuse me. Andrew T. Blodon, chief of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests permission to run for the position of chief. Of the Sag Harbor Fire Department election to be held on April fourth, twenty twenty four. And this is part of the process because he doesn't live inside the village, so each chief has to ask for permission. I didn't. So do I have a motion? Motion by trustee Corus, second, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Michael Guyer, first assistant chief of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests permission to run for the position of first assistant chief. Of the Sag Harbor Fire Department election to be held on April fourth, twenty twenty four. Same thing, as Michael does not live in Incorporated Village. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so carried. Gary Wilson Jr., second assistant chief of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests permission to run for the position of second assistant chief. Of the Sag Harbor Fire Department election to be held on April fourth, twenty twenty four. And same as Gary does not live inside the Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so carried. Carrie Garapi, secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps, Corps, excuse me. Request authorization to accept the resignation of Gemma Gardella and Stacy McGowan. And remove them from the insurance rolls.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Carrie Garapi, secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Vise the mayor, Board of Trustees. The following officers have been elected February twenty first, twenty twenty four. Effective, these are the officers that are on the board. That's effective on February twenty first.
So moved.
So we have Missy Hassler as president, Vice President Steve Hatfield, Treasurer Mark Portress, Secretary Carrie Garapi. Director Janice Arbier, Director Edmund Downs, and Director Robert Capazola. Do you have a motion? Trustee Kane, second, seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Hillary Offenberg requests authorization for a commercial dock usage of the transient dock. One for the purpose of sunset and day cruises. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
I have a question. Um, do we need to have a similar motion for American cruises if they're gonna use a dock for commercial purposes? It's just a question for now, I've.
Cause the, the question is, everybody who uses the transient dock require our approval or is this about frequency or and, and?
I think it's a commercial aspect.
Liz, you're on mute.
Can't hear you. She's going to you. We get it.
Okay, so we have to come back to that.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And then we have resolution.
You were correct. Sorry, I just got off mute.
Thank you.
So this is a final resolution that requires action, which is for Cameron Engineering and its role as village engineer. Is hereby authorized to provide sidewalk specification and our plans for the property of thirty one Long Island Avenue. To construct the sidewalk safely for health, safety, and welfare of the people of the village of Sag Harbor.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Corus, seconded by trustee Plum.
Yeah, and I would also like to suggest that we uh, the B, DBW feels strongly that the uh, front. Needs to be fenced off for safety and towers is done. Open site is very dangerous. And I, it's unfortunate because we might have to pay for it ourselves, but. Um, we've had one trip and fall there so far and you get the second one's a lot worse than the first one.
Okay, so I had a motion in the second, yeah?
Yeah, second.
Got you, but all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That brings us to the approval payment of bills. We have uh, warrant thirty seven and the amount of four hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty eight dollars and sixteen cents. Warrant thirty eight and the amount of fifty two thousand, six hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty nine cents. Warrant number thirty nine and the amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Warrant number forty and the amount of five hundred dollars. Warrant number forty one and the amount of. One million, sixty thousand, three hundred and two dollars and sixteen cents. Can I have a motion to pay all the warrants?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor, hey, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. That brings us to our public comments. We have fifteen minutes of public session. Limit is three minutes per speaker. Anybody like to speak? Kate?
Um, I was, it's my understanding that we passed a law that um, the. Contractors can't work on weekends anymore. Was it, it'll be an hour later?
That's right.
Yeah.
In the evenings. Okay.
Reserves.
They can't work on weekends, Saturdays and Sundays.
An hour more on weekdays.
Weekdays now, what's, I mean, uh, so when there is a contractor working on the outside on Saturday. Is the village walking around or?
I'm sorry, what's the law we passed? It wasn't that no contractors work on Saturday.
Wait, great, great, Liz.
It's really relevant to the noise. Contractor noise um, pursuant to the code, a, as you stated, uh, board members with respect to. The hours, changing the hours in the day. But I don't know what the question is.
Well, if we're working outside on the house on Saturday.
There's not a ban against contractors working on a Saturday. There's, there's a ban on the amount of no, of loud. Noise contractors working on Saturdays.
Is it, is this?
Heavy equipment, things like that.
Yeah.
I thought we discussed it on the evening.
Right.
And we talked about the idea that plumbers and electricians could work inside.
Gainers.
But demolition specifically was one of those things that was covered under the noise.
Swalling and putting up.
Correct.
Cleaning and all that.
Yeah, that's.
Right.
Call code enforcement.
Oh, that's what I'm asking on Saturday. Is the village gonna wander, walk, walk, drive around and see?
I think that what would happen is you would call the police.
You call the police. And then the police will notify on Monday morning, they will share the information so that if, you know.
You know, it's nice that I don't have to be the bad one.
Right, no, 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 no.
You shouldn't be doing that. I don't want you doing that. You gotta call the police, Kate.
Now, the other thing is, because I have a neighbor now, who finds who have to clean some of these new neighbors. So I just care down all the trees and put up the house, put the regents on the house. And I, he had to be stopped because he didn't have a. But the witches on the house. And I, he had to be stopped because he didn't have a building from it, um, down on these trees. So, uh, because he didn't have a building from it. So now, in the past, one of these trees that is nowhere near his pool or his addition is right next to my house. So it's a big tree. So I am wondering. Uh, this law that you passed probably doesn't go into effect right away, like tonight.
Not until it's filed with the Secretary of State, sorry.
So then how long does that take then?
It takes about, it could take thirty days. It could take two weeks to thirty days depending on the Secretary of State's office.
Because the guy who was cutting down the trees, it just picked, it said, I'm gonna cut this down, you know. You know, it's nothing to do with the operation that they're gonna be doing on their, the addition or the hole. It's just because of contractor, pre-contractor, we'll make more money if you cut down trees. So. Uh, but Bruce, Bruce came that one day and stopped you working, but I'm working now, I think we have to wait. Can't, I can't say anything or can't call anybody because we don't know.
Till it's effective.
Yeah, that's why it was important to get that. Right, tonight, not let the perfect get in the way of the very good.
Building property, building property, it's slow down too, right?
I, that's, I have no comments on that.
Thank you very much and thank you for passing with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
I'm over it.
Second.
Alls in favor? So carried, adjourned.
Thanks, Liz.
Bye, Liz. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Good night.